Just one, two, three. How about this gentleman up at the front table? Is that Mr. Floyd? No?
In the blue.
Yes, sir. Would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Do you mind? You don't have to if you don't want to.
You, sir, in the blue.
Yes, sir.
I'll lead.
Okay, if everyone would stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you. And I believe we have Diane Forbes here is going to sing for us. Let's ask God to bless America this morning, okay? Sing with me, please, if you know the words.
I hear you.
Okay? You can hear me? Okay. That one better? Okay. God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with your light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans white with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home. Amen. (applause) ...the governmental process of Myrtle Beach. So, we all pay attention to what is happening in the Myrtle Beach City Council, and we are very honored to have you here today and honored to have welcomed our challenging The format today, we have ten questions, and we each, everyone should have one at your table. If you don't have it and you'd like a hot copy, it's over at the DS to the left of me. The format is each candidate will have two minutes to give us their elevator speech of who they are and why they are interested in running for City Council. And then we have some financial questions. We'll give them two minutes to respond to those questions. If you have questions, I think we have one person that has added, asked for an add-on question. If you need an add-on question, if you will give it to Marcia, who's standing over at that table, and we will study it before it goes forward. And then at the end, whoever wants to stay for a while and answer questions, of course, as long as you want to stay and ask questions and answer questions, we, we don't have to rush out. Okay, so question, the first item is alphabetical introduction of each of the candidates. We're starting with Ed Carey. He starts with a C, so hopefully we got the alphabet in order.
Thanks for coming out this afternoon. I'm Ed Carey. I've lived in Myrtle Beach permanently for thirteen years. I've been coming here since 1981. I'm sixty-two. I've got two professional grown daughters that are my pride and joy. I've spent a career, and I'm still working, in project management, construction and development. I'm a process person. I don't, I don't like the way the process of the city's running. That's why I'm running for City Council. I tried for mayor a couple of years ago. We have a lot of money in this town. We have a lot of issues in this town, and I'm the only candidate that is not representing any of the special interests. I don't represent the Board of Realtors. I don't represent the Chamber of Commerce. I don't represent the Market Common. I don't represent the Redevelopment Authority. I represent the people, and the people need to take this city back. And I hope and pray that I can get your support, that I can get inside the door and start talking new ideas on how to make things a little bit fairer all around, small business and to all the citizens of this, this great city and all the investors. Thank you.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello, I'm Charles Gaskew. Hello, I'm Charles Gaskew. I'm a resident in Myrtle Beach, lifelong resident, and I'm running for City Council. I'm the law and order candidate, and also believe in everybody being treated equal and the city that we currently under operation. Some of the things that goes on here with our funds and our council, I guess you people understand that it's not operating like it should be. And if I get elected, I will fight for the people, one hundred percent. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Wayne Gray. Let me first say thank you to Johnny and the Myrtle Beach Republican Women's Club for hosting this event and for your attendance. I have been attending a couple of meetings that you've had over the last several months, and this is a great crowd, and I appreciate your interest. Again, I'm Wayne Gray. I'm a lifelong resident of Myrtle Beach. I'm a senior, senior executive with Sothnovius Bank. I've also been involved in a number of private business entities in Myrtle Beach to include the golf and hospitality and restaurant industry. I have fortunate to raise three grown children, who, one's in college, one's out of college, and one's getting ready to get out of college. Got one off the payroll, which is a great thing. I served sixteen years previously on City Council and three times as mayor pro temp. And as I think about where we are, just about two weeks ago, the Methodist Church celebrated one hundred years of existence. So when you think about Myrtle Beach, we roughly have been and are about one hundred years old. So I'd like to think of the future as Myrtle Beach 2.0 and think about the challenges and the opportunities that are in front of us. And one of the largest one is how do we balance being a great community, a world-class community? We have world-class neighborhoods and world-class residents with the challenge of inviting twenty million visitors a year that come into the Grand Strand and come into Myrtle Beach, which funds the wonderful resources that we have. So what I want to focus on, though, I've got five areas of commitment. Public safety, we've got to be safe and secure in our homes and our businesses, our public infrastructure. We've got to make sure that we've got proper roads, water and sewer lines, stormwater retention, our sanitation equipment and facilities. We've got to have fiscal integrity. That means that we're maintaining low taxes and that we're managing our expenses so that we can be accountable to you, the taxpayer. Finally, I would say that we need to have better intergovernmental cooperation. We need to make sure that we can work with our other political organizations that we're working with so that we all can obtain that common goal of making this a world-class resort and a world-class community. I look forward to talking with you more between now and Election Day on November the fifth. Thank you.
I too would like to thank Johnny and the Republican Women's Group for holding this forum. I talked to somebody when I came in, and there are very few opportunities for people to meet all of the candidates and hear what we stand for. I'd like to know a little bit about my audience before I start talking. So just real quickly, how many of you are registered voters in the city of Myrtle Beach? That's very important. And how many live in Ory County or Georgetown County? Good, thank you. As I said, I'm Mary Jeffcoat. My husband and I moved here forty-two years ago. He's an attorney in Myrtle Beach, and I have been active primarily in the nonprofit world, including the homeless community. We have two daughters. Anne lives in Hendersonville with our only granddaughter and her husband, and my daughter Sarah is married to Jay Benoit, who's a local realtor, and many of you know John and Judy Benoit, who've lived here a long time. Fun fact, Judy Benoit and my husband went to Flora High School together in Columbia, South Carolina, so we have a very small state. The rest of the information about me you can find on my palm card on your table. I do want to tell you a little bit about why I'm running and why I think it's important for me to be re-elected. I have a proven track record. Four years ago, I ran on public safety. And let me tell you the good news. Myrtle Beach is a safer place today than it was four years ago. Violent crime is down double digits two years in a row. We have more police officers on the street now than we had four years ago. We've committed to hiring ten officers a year for seven years. We continued the eight-hundred-camera surveillance program that was started. We have license plate readers. Let me tell you, if you commit a crime in Myrtle Beach, you are going to be caught. Our police department is fully staffed. When I took office four years ago, we had thirty to fifty regular vacancies. The reason we're fully staffed is we're paying our police officers more and giving them better benefits. We have the lowest owner-occupied property tax rate of any other state, city in South Carolina. Infrastructure's in good shape. We've had two major flooding events, two hurricanes. Myrtle Beach came out well. We have new announcements that downtown revitalization is happening, and I hope to be able to talk about that more. Thank you.
Good morning. Good afternoon, actually. It's not morning anymore. My name is John Crutch, and I want to first also say thank you to the Myrtle Beach Republican Women for doing this event, and thank you to each of you here, city resident or county resident, for being a part of a process that is not only essential to our city but to our state and our nation, that is the election process, choosing who you have to represent you now and in the future. I come from Greensboro, North Carolina originally. I moved down here seven years ago, right out of college. Decided that Myrtle Beach was a mid-Atlantic frontier for me. Some of you may not know what I mean by that. What I mean by that is Myrtle Beach as a mid-Atlantic frontier is a place of potential and of opportunity, a place where we can carve the future out for ourselves as current residents, as young professionals, as people who have been here all of our lives. Our story is still being written to this day. Now, why am I running? It's the age-old question, right? I'm running for service, something I'm sure you've heard from other candidates before and you'll hear from them present and in the future. When I came to Myrtle Beach, I became inspired to get involved with nonprofit service opportunities. I've done that every single year that I've been in Myrtle Beach from anything from, from the Board of Realtors, an industry that represents $4.1 billion in spending in the county of Ory and twenty-five thousand-plus jobs in our county. I've been involved with projects like the Five Points Associations. I've done murals downtown. I am the only non-incumbent candidate who has done service work in downtown Myrtle Beach, not just talked about doing service work and making downtown a better place. Reasons I'm running, other than service, public safety is number one. I've been through the Citizens Police Academy. I'm currently in the Citizens Fire Academy, watching the processes, learning about the processes that our first responders go through on a daily basis, and understanding why we have got to continue the work of current council and investing in our first responders. Segwaying that goes directly into downtown redevelopment. I think it's important that our red carpet coming down 501 into the heart of our city, the heart of our city that has been broken for many years, be corrected and beautified and made better, and continue to implement this new downtown master plan. I think we need to be proactive with infrastructure investment, from the waste transfer station to pedestrian and traffic safety, such as fixing and installing new sidewalks in areas that don't have them, working on the surveillance programs as well as having the streetlight improvements. And finally, to make Myrtle Beach the most business-friendly city in the state of South Carolina, and in the next ten years, make it the most business-friendly city in the southeast. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. That's okay. So just to reiterate, the candidates for City Council, the incumbents are Mike Chestnut, who had a fire this week in his home, so he's not here, Mary Jeffcoat, who we've met, Phil Rinder is not here due to previous appointments. Our challengers are Ed Carey on the N, Charles Gaskew on the Gaskew, sorry, Wayne Gray, Mary, and John Crutch. I said it right this time? Okay, let's begin. The first question is, and you have this at your table. Hi there, Randall. What are your thoughts about the city of Myrtle Beach's debt, which is approximately 200 million, compared to North Myrtle Beach with less than 10 million in debt, Ory County's non-airport debt, which is 62 million? The reality is that debt carries interest, and the interest counts up to the taxpayers. So we'll start with Ed. Ed, you have two minutes. For the larger questions, we're going to do a two-minute. Steve, Steve is going to be the, the timekeeper.
Can Steve give us a thirty-second warning?
Sure. If you'll give him a thirty-second warning. Okay?
Why don't you start? Each person for you, because it's all the same guy.
We're not going to do that, sir. We're not going to do that. I'm sorry, I should have made that clear. The next person will be the first for the next question. Okay, well, we'll give them fair time. And you can either come forward or you can stand at your chair.
Where does the microphone? Where is the microphone? Okay, I'll find it for you.
So the question is, what would I do about the, the approximately 200 million-dollar city debt? I've answered this question many times two years ago. First thing I'd do is quit adding to it. If you look at the debt structure in the city, it's, it's out of balance. The city has start, has got to start being a government instead of being a developer and a marketing firm. And we need, if we need debt in the city, it's for infrastructure. But you know what? We could pay for our infrastructure improvements if we sold some of the properties that we don't need. We don't need to have a hotel. We don't need to have a campground of 135 acres on the ocean and other properties. City just needs to get out of the business of being the developer, and they just need to be accommodating to more people and more development. So the simple answer is, we're going to start reducing that debt and getting rid of these private, or city-owned properties that compete with private enterprise. Thank you.
Okay. On this city debt that we have here in Myrtle Beach, which is approximately 200 million dollars, what I'd do to reduce that is cut down on, on a lot of the excess debt that we have. We use money care stays. It's like a person, if you go out and overborrow your limit, then you get deeper and deeper in debt, and it never stops. So you have to get the council and the city to just stop spending when they don't have the money. That's what I would do. And if I'm elected to council, I'll fight against this debt and see if we can't send it in a different direction. Thank you.
but I served sixteen years on City Council, where I'll be honest with you, much of the debt that we have was a part of decisions that I voted for. And you first have to understand that there are a variety types of debt obligations that the city has. There's what we call general obligation debt, which is what the general taxpayer is responsible for. Or there's what we call revenue bonds, which are actually being paid for by an asset that was built, and the revenue generated from that is what repays the debt. When you put that in perspective, we roughly have more than 200 million dollars in total debt. I would tell you that the city's bond ratings are as good as they can get. They are double-A bond ratings from the rating of the financial position of the city of Myrtle Beach. That's as best that you can get for a community like ours that is heavily reliant on tourism and that also is subject to natural disasters. I'll say this, though, about managing the city's finances. Thirty years as a senior executive in the banking community, both with community and national banks, thirty years of being a business owner, and that gives me the experience to actually evaluate the debt obligations that are being considered, to evaluate the expenditures of the city, and to make sure that we're managing those dollars that are efficient and accountable to the taxpayer and that we're not asking for you to pay too much of that. And I would finally say that, given the environment right now, we've been, we've been experiencing fairly good economy for about the last ten years, as we came out of the world, the Great Recession. And I would say that there are some headwinds that we're going to be facing in the next several years that is going to need folks that have experience to offer good fiscal management, and possibly with some new tax revenues that would be coming to the city. I certainly would use that to look at where we can reduce our debt on assets that are going to need to be replaced or improved. Thank you very much.
I love following a banker who talked about debt in a very intelligent way. How many of you bought your home for cash? Raise your hand. How many of you bought your car for cash? Raise your hand. All right, here's the thing about debt, in addition to what Mr. Gray has said. For example, I hope that we build a new library. To do that, we're going to have to sell some bonds. If we wait until we have the 15 million dollars needed to build the library, guess who's going to pay for the library? You and me, and we'll be dead before that new library is built. That's one of the reasons that responsible debt for municipal government is important. The second reason is, I, I had a, an event with Del Webb people, and they asked the same thing. They said, what, what's about this debt? They felt, because the debt is talked about so much, that we were going to bankers like Wayne to borrow for operating. All of our debt is bonded, and we have a very high bond rating. And the third thing I'm going to say about the city finances is, we have the number-one municipal finance director in the state, if not in the southeast. And I can tell you that people from all over call him for advice, and if he, he wants to be sure that we are not going to get in over our heads, I think Mr. Gray is right. We're going to be facing some headwinds. The same financial manager told council, how many years ago, before I was on, before the recession, when we were doing great, "Don't spend this money. This is not real money." And the city didn't at the time. So we rely heavily on financial advisors and bonding agencies to help us. Thank you so much.
It's going to be a little bit of a musical chair with this microphone going up and down for the next hour, so bear with us. Government accountability. Raise your hand if you have interest in that. There's a lot of hands that are down. I'm a bit concerned about. That is very important. I, I agree. I think that what some folks on, everyone that's spoken so far, has some great points. We are one of the fastest-growing cities in the nation. As a growing city, as a city whose face and future is still being drawn and written, sometimes the face being drawn by Mr. Wilson over here in a, in a great way, by the way, debt is going to happen. It has to be managed properly. I've, I've met, I've had meetings with some of the finance department before. One of the great things that I take pride in is building relationships with different people in city departments, whether it's construction services, the finance department, Michelle and Michael in there, and Michael Price do a fantastic job of advising City Council on, on what moves to make and what moves not to make, and that is the expertise of the city's financial department to make sure that we are in good shape, that, so that City Council, current and in the future, can set policy that is in alliance and accordance with some of their recommendations and sometimes not. We are growing. That debt may continue to grow for a bit. It is something to make our city better, safer, sidewalks need to be installed, things like that. Mr. Gray talked about the bond rating, which is in a great spot. I did some research before I came here today because I knew the question was coming up. We're a double-A bonded rating city. Thirty seconds? Thank you. City Charleston's triple-A. So talking about some of the things in terms of natural disaster, as well as where the city is, one big difference is tourism versus not. So one of my plans, like I said, was to make Myrtle Beach the most business-friendly city in the state, to attract jobs beyond tourism, so that we can make these things go up, such as the bond rating. So our debt, all of a sudden, has a higher purpose other than just feeding tourism, so that we can have a city where residents, future residents and visitors alike can have a common place to share and call home. Thank you.
Okay, we have the microphone now, this microphone. You can stand up at your chair, if you think that would work better. And I'll turn this one down. Okay. Turn it on, please.
Test. Test. That's on. Test. Test. Hello?
Okay, I guess you want it.
It's on. It's just not working. Is it this? So that's the wireless microphone is there?
Hey, Dan.
Test, test. Here we go, here we go. Test. There's a light now, anyway.
Is it working?
The light wasn't on. Now it is on.
Testing. Is it on?
Yeah. Maybe this one has to be on, perhaps, don't they?
I was looking on the floor.
Testing now that we're working.
I'll get somebody to have a technology advisor here.
Good idea.
The fall weather.
Okay, sure. Well, okay, well, Mr. Gaskew, Wayne, will you start with the second question? You, because I think you could. Yeah.
I have a follow-up question for the first one.
Okay. All right, Steve, if you can talk really loud. Okay, wait, we got the microphone.
Testing.
I'm going to test the first, second question. Okay, Steve does a follow-up to question one.
Yeah, I don't need a microphone. Our first question dealt with the city budget and the debt, and I'd like to ask Mr. Wayne Gray, I've got a question. Back in 2017, the Myrtle, Myrtle Beach had 29,000 residents, and we were 220 million dollars in debt. It's gone down a little bit since then, the debt. That represented 7,586,000. That represented $7,586 for every adult and child who was a resident of Myrtle Beach. You stated at that time that you felt that debt was too low and for true growth to occur, the city would need to increase that debt. What is your position now on a debt increase as far as how it contributes to city growth?
Great question. First of all, I didn't state that, so I'll correct that. That was not stated. But again, as a community that continues to grow with permanent residents, continues to grow with attracting new tourists, new types of businesses, there are going to be necessary investments into infrastructure and/or assets that will serve that growth. And one way to make that investment is responsibly taking on debt. Now, again, I would tell you that we have a variety of different types of debt and that not all of that debt is general obligation where the full faith and credit of the taxpayer is responsible for that. I would offer, though, finally what I said in that last question. Thirty years of my senior banking executive experience, thirty years of being an entrepreneur, where you both have to make decisions about the level of debt, the type of debt and the project that you're financing that's going to serve your city, gives me the experienced leadership that will be able to manage our expenses and debt going forward.
Thank you for your response. And I got this off the internet, so it had to be true.
Okay, question number two. This is for Mr. Gasky to begin. What would your plans be for the Myrtle Beach city budget? And how would you implement that plan? Would you consider reducing the current budget of approximately 200 million? What?
About the Myrtle Beach city budget?
Yes, sir.
The budget here at the city of Myrtle Beach. What I would do with this $200 million budget would be to cut out a lot of the expenditure, expenditures that the city is spending. We're not getting any results out of it. That's plain and simple. And if I'm elected to the council, that could be one of the things that I'll try to change. That's all I have to say about that.
So the question is, again, the city's annual budget is roughly $200 million. You have a general fund that generally pays your police and your fire and what we call your core governmental services. Then you have some business operations like our water and sewer facility and/or convention center hotel and/or convention center. And when you add all that up, you get generally about $200 million of revenue and you got roughly $200 million of expenses a year. I would offer to you, given my experience as a business owner and a senior executive in banking, that managing and understanding budgets is what I do for a living and I can offer that leadership for this body. One of the most things that we've got to do is make sure that we understand the recommendations that are being made by city management and that we manage those expenditures properly and that we're accountable and transparent in spending our money. One thing that I disagreed with recently on the city council was they expended probably $25,000, $30,000, $40,000 in making a decision to possibly look at buying a piece of property that would be a new city hall and office complexes. And we don't need a new city hall. When you look at the city's assessment plan of city-owned facilities, nowhere in there does it state that the city needs a new city hall. So again, we wasted the taxpayer's dollars in pursuing an effort that was not one that was a good idea, which determined not to be the case. Thank you.
I want to ask...
Could you wait until we finish with the...
Well, it's the same thing. You just got too excited. If I may.
If you could wait for everyone to speak to that question.
I want to know why we are still on the sheriff's, the convention center hotel.
Sir, will we address that a little bit later?
I think that's a question later on.
The budget process. Here's what I'm going to promise. I promised it four years ago and I'll promise it again. Well, I did promise it four years ago because we didn't have the plan. I promise that if we don't have an alternate revenue source, we will continue to raise property taxes just enough to hire those 10 police officers a year for the next, now it's five years. We've done it for the past two years and I'll commit to do it for the next five years. That might not be a popular thing, but all we've heard is public safety, public safety, public safety, and these new police officers on the street are working. Now, real quickly, the budget process for the city of Myrtle Beach. There are a mayor and six council members who have to make the decision. I can't stand up here and say, "I'm going to make sure this happens." It takes teamwork. We go into, we'll go into retreat in November and we'll go over the whole budget. Now, here's the deal. Most of the budget is set. We're not going to cut firefighters, we're not going to cut police, we're not going to cut water, we're not going to cut sewer. The amount of discretionary spending we have is very small. And that's where we have to spend an awful lot of time to decide where we want to spend the new money. So I promise you that I will be responsible. Taxes for me will be raised only for public safety. For public safety and public safety only. And then when we look at, here's what I'm hearing. I'm not saying I'll reduce the budget. I've been hearing anybody in town saying, "We want less." I'm hearing downtown redevelopment, more public safety, more infrastructure. Thirty seconds. So as we look at these new needs, we have got to balance them. Now, something's been said that is not true. I don't think Myrtle Beach is one of the fastest-growing cities in the country or a county is one of the fastest-growing areas in the country. And it's going to affect the city of Myrtle Beach and we have to be very vigilant, both financially and in other ways, to protect the quality of life of the people who live within the city of Myrtle Beach. Thank you.
You know, I have to agree with Mary on that. They're knocking a lot of doors these past weeks. A lot of doors. And not one person that has answered that door has said anything, not a word, about that, not a word about the budget. What they've said? Creating jobs and keeping the economy strong. What else have they said? Downtown redevelopment. Public safety, which goes hand-in-hand with the homelessness issue we have currently. And what else have they said? Managing growth. Those have been the four that I'm hearing consistently through door-knocking as well as independent research. Doing those things and making sure that our budget is aligned with those goals is my promise to you on council. Making sure that we continue to invest in our first responders, both police, fire and EMS, to make sure they have the best topical line equipment to do their jobs in all categories. Making sure that we are proactive in infrastructure, which, believe it or not, will cost money and might increase the debt for a time. But to be proactive in those areas to make sure that we are the best city possible for our residents is absolutely imperative, in my opinion, and it's a promise that I'm making to you if I'm going to get on city council. Thank you.
So we have a $200 million budget. And as they said before, some of it's fixed with our police and our fire, our administration of the city. But that's not the majority of it. Majority is all these other taxes, licenses and fees that the city brings in and then they shuffle them back out that are restricted on what they can use the money for. You know? Ask yourself, what's the purpose of government? I think it's for public safety, infrastructure and property rights. Right now, we're funneling a lot of our tax money and the tourist tax money to special interest groups. There's pockets of property around the city, the developments, Market Common is one of them, where the real estate tax is down there for the most part. Don't go operate the city or the police or the fire department. They're stuck in a TIF fund. That's why the city, the county and the schools are on the lawsuit right now. It's got a little out of balance. $13 million coming in, about $3.5 million debt service. And the excess goes into this fund just for stuff at Market Common, which is kind of nice if you're a resident down there. But is that really equitable? I'm not paying, for the most part, anything towards the school system in this county. I'm not paying, for the most part, anything towards the county operations as a citizen of the county. And I'm not paying anything for the operations of the city. That's just one example how pockets of money and taxes are tied up by state legislation and the comments seem to just look the other way, not come up with any alternate answers. That's what I want to do when I get in there. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gray. The DRC and the TAG, for those of you that may not know these acronyms. The DRC is Downtown Redevelopment Corporation. The TAG is the Technology Advisory Group. With the DRC being dissolved, do you think another nonprofit should be formed to handle innovation efforts by the TAG group or another group? And is the DRC being shut down because of all the lawsuits that they're dealing with?
Thank you. I was a part of council that was formed, Downtown Redevelopment Corporation. I will tell you that after 20 years, I think that the efforts and the purpose of that organization have expired. I concur with the decision of city council recently to, in essence, eliminate the board of directors. Because what had been happening is, is you had an unelected body that were recommending and making decisions in the city in terms of development downtown. And quite frankly, they had no authority. All of that authority was asked with the seven elected officials. So my recommendation in terms of decisions about investment and policy in our downtown area would remain with the seven elected officials. The Technology Advisory Group is just that. It is an advisory group made up of individuals who have knowledge and experience and work in the technological field that can provide advice and guidance to the city how it can be more technologically friendly and attract those types of small business and entrepreneurs that are in the technological world. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Real quickly on the DRC, Downtown Redevelopment Corporation. It is the right decision to move on to another entity. We have been visiting other cities that have redeveloped in a very vibrant way and most of them have a nonprofit, business-owned and business-run entity taking care of the details downtown. And that's what I hope that we find through the city of Myrtle Beach and I hope we find it very soon. I do want to talk about the Technology Advisory Group because I feel placing my heart for it. About a little over a year ago, Greg, we met with, at the train depot, these people who keep saying, "We need more technology jobs. We need more opportunity." Over 100 people came. And they were talking about things they wanted and things they could do. And I will say, and I said, "Let's form an advisory group." And council quickly agreed. And in less than a year, that group is right on the cusp of opening a, what do they call it, Greg? A co-work space in one of the buildings that we offered. They have already leased the space, the few spaces that they had. This is a vibrant, exciting group and is going to help to answer the question, how can we diversify our economy? How can we get more young people coming to the downtown, not only to work there, but to live there? It is a very, very exciting thing. The thing that happened just yesterday, and this relates to the DRC, is that we announced a microbrewery and a maker and event space going in the old Bingo Building, two-story building. It's an historic building. I brought these historic tax credits to the city of Myrtle Beach three years ago. Forty percent of that project is going to be paid with the historic tax credits and abandoned building credits. These are exciting incentives that other developers can use. And I think we're going to see our downtown take off very quickly because of the innovation and the incentives being offered by city council today.
I do think that the decision was the proper one. I think that the DRC has lived its life and now it's time to move on to the next. Looking at places like Columbia, like Greenville, like Charleston. There are nonprofit groups that operate in these cities. Not only in South Carolina, but across the nation, that help the city become better, that are made up by groups of business owners, by groups of volunteers, so that it is giving those people a vested interest in making the area which they live, work and play a better place. The Technology Advisory Group out of Mathmoth, we've talked about. We worked on getting a grant from them this year that unfortunately was not received from Etsy through a nonprofit called the Five Points Association that I'm involved in in historic downtown. Unfortunately, they gave that grant, but it sat down with the folks there to create a partnership. Partnerships and relationships, be it private, public or both, and I believe that private-public relationships are one of the best relationships, are how cities move forward across the nation. It's how they've moved forward across the nation for centuries. I think we need to continue to do that. Thank you.
The death of the DRC, isn't that sweet? A city-owned corporation that did the hit squad to steal and muscle out small businessmen downtown. You know, this has been, this has been a journey that I've just been so opposed to what the city's done. Why do we have a city planning department and have to have a Downtown Redevelopment Corporation? And we've got something called the Community Appearance Board? Limited government, put it in the planning department. If we need advisory groups, that's fine. But what the DRC has claimed they've done for us is, I just think it's just a bunch of smoking mirrors, okay? They've collected tax money from the parking meters and funded a board and some high-paid executives. And they claim all this development. The city is not a developer. They need to get out of the way of development. They need to make opportunities for development. Thank you for the tax credits, Mary. I don't know where that came out of your checkbook, but the city did steal all those properties down there by forcing those people out of business and making them abandon. And they basically created their own distressed area. So I'm happy we're going forward. I really am. And it's a positive thing. But we need to roll everything into one planning department. And we can have advisory groups advising them, that's fine. Maybe we need advisory groups by neighborhood. Maybe we need single-member districts, so everybody's represented in the city. Thank you.
Okay, with this DRC group we have, I'm glad to see that government, period. There's never been a thing downtown except raw, raw, raw. And it's time for that to stop. Maybe the advisory board here, because that's why we'd like to bring some back, but we need to stop spending tax dollars in the downtown redevelopment and to let the owners of the building spend their own money to bring the dead city back, which will never happen downtown. I was raised here, started 77 years ago and that downtown is gone. And you might go face-to-face, just completely destroyed. So why would we continue spending more and more on a dead horse, so to speak? Thank you.
Okay, and I think Mary is next, right? Okay. Mary, what do you think about Myrtle Beach infrastructure? Safety, homelessness and the TDF functionality, the tourism development?
Each of those questions is at least two to three to five minutes. So I'm going to pick the one I want to talk about because this is the one I've worked on for decades and that's homelessness in Myrtle Beach. Every city in this country is struggling with homelessness and I'll tell you why. All of us are old enough to remember before 1980. Before 1980, our country did not have a homelessness problem. You know what happened in 1980? State and federal governments closed mental health institutions. Eighty percent of our homeless people have either a mental health or an addiction and a good many of them are veterans. So that's why I've spent about the last two decades trying to help the homeless in the city of Myrtle Beach. With the help of city council, how many years ago, 2011? We formed a task force to better coordinate the services being offered to the homeless. I was hired to help coordinate that effort. And what happened was, we had five separate entities running five shelters in the city of Myrtle Beach. We combined that into one, New Directions of Warrick County. Now, that is responsible taxpayer money and we're doing a better job helping the homeless in our community. We have a lot more to do. We were committed to helping the homeless who wanted to help themselves, but guess what? If you're addicted to drugs or alcohol, it's a hard thing to want to help yourself. The next thing we need to do, and I hope we do it soon, is open a day center so that our police are not arresting homeless people. It takes the police officers off the street for about two hours. They process them, they spend 24, 48 hours in jail and they're back on the street. So this day center is going to be extremely important. We're working with some other... with some other agencies, so we have more coordination to do, finding permanent housing and providing daily meals. So the next effort is homeless at a day center and working better with Echo and Community Kitchen, so that we can coordinate things even better. So I have a real heartfelt homeless, because so many of our veterans are homeless. Thank you so much. I'll answer the other questions afterwards if you want to stay.
Again, this is a very, there are four questions in one minute span, so I'm going to focus on one as well. Mine's going to be infrastructure. I think that infrastructure, again, in a growing city, is something we have to be proactive with. I've spent a lot of times on sidewalks. The special interest group that I'm a part of, the Board of Realtors, that I'm a director on the Board of Realtors, paid out of our pocket from the National Association of Realtors to do a walkability study in the cities downtown. The National Association of Realtors paid for that from the special interest group that does that, takes and takes and takes from the city. I'm just kidding. We've taken zero from the city. We've looked at sidewalks. I've gone down sidewalks where, if you go down Kings Highway right now, you have a few different categories of sidewalk. You have the four-foot sidewalk, the four-foot sidewalk with telephone pole in the middle. You have the two-foot sidewalk, and then you have the trail that's been worn by the folks walking up and down Kings Highway because there's no proper sidewalk in many parts of the southern part of Kings Highway. I've gone down Cedar Street. I've gone down Third Avenue North in the past month, where I spent a lot of time talking to folks and figuring out what the issues are of the people that are often forgotten in the middle of our city because the voter turnout is low there. I've seen the lack of sidewalks between Third Avenue North and Witherswash Bridge, where a multiple hundred thousand dollar bridge was built by the DOT, but because of a decision back in the 90s, there are no sidewalks, complete in our historic downtown. I've seen low to moderate income people in different communities, be it Harlem, be it Booker T. Washington, be it Witherswash, which Mr. Gaston, I'm sure, can attest to, that have to walk on the pavement with minimal street lighting in our districts, because there aren't no sidewalks for our pedestrians, for our residents that can't afford to fill up their tank, that can't afford a vehicle, be it cash or through auto loan, to take care of. And this is why, this is one, just one part of productivity in government that I think we need to focus on. Thank you.
I guess I'll head on infrastructure. You know, the sidewalks, John wants to fix, can easily be taken care of if the planning department puts it into our laws and regulations. Every time somebody develops a piece of property, we have a regulation on what kind of sidewalks out front. Maybe we have to beef up their allowable buildable square footage, push their building back, and give them a benefit on building more space. So the development cost, the product development cost of that property will eventually build up better sidewalks and stuff like that. I think the more important infrastructure problem we have is stormwater management in this town. I know, I looked at a document from the city the other day, at $79 million in capital improvements coming in the next five fiscal years. Thirty-six million of it was at City Hall that I don't think we need. And, you know, I think of 79 million over five years, and I think of how much money are we going to be given to market this town over the same five years? It's probably going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $120 million, $120 million. Why are we spending more money marketing than spending money on making it clean and safe? That's my answer on the infrastructure.
When we get to...
Hold on a second. The National Board of Realtors was very, very good to the residents of Ori County last year. I don't know how many people know, but they gave money to a lot of the people that were flooded out. And I want to personally thank the National Board of Realtors, so that everybody knows they were really, really generous to the flooded-out beach. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I disagree. I would miss Mary here about the homeless problem. I live in 301 with the Swars Drive. And actually, the program that she's initiated here in Myrtle Beach has created more problems than good. Because they always drown out the military, homeless, military people. You might find one out of better fifty of them that's out there homeless on the street. Most of them are prostitutes, dope dealers, and things like that, because me and Mr. Bear Landis, single-handed with the police department, worked with hundreds and hundreds of these people in the last year. And the homeless situation in Myrtle Beach is self-inflicted. They don't want to get out of it because there's too much free to give away by people that just may here. And that's got to stop. Me and, we cleaned the park up. It used to be a dope deal. Now, we turn it back into where people can have birthday parties, visit in peace, and be not worried about robbing every minute on the street. With the city in this park, which is the best chief Myrtle Beach has ever had, worked with us, and we cleaned it up. And people say, "Well, how did you do this?" Communication has got everything to do with it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'm going to attempt to answer three of those issues. One is, if you look at the longboard that you have in front of me, public safety, public safety, public safety. I was a part of the council that initiated what we called the Retention and Reprovision Plan in 2017, which was investing in new technology, those 800 cameras and license plate readers that you see across the city, investing in new salaries, improvement in starting salaries for police officers, and also working with our state legislators to be able to move some of the accommodations tax funding to help fund law enforcement in times of the year when we really need it. So I'm going to continue that investment in our public safety. Secondly, public infrastructure. Roads, water sewer lines, stormwater, sanitation equipment, street lighting, that's all going to enrich our neighborhoods and our business districts. If we enrich our neighborhoods, we enrich our business districts, then we will be an enriched city, and those that come here and visit will want to continue to visit, which is the lifeblood of our economy. Finally, I'll say, I was a part of the group that crafted the Tourism Development Fee legislation in 2009. Not only did it provide additional monies for us to promote, market, and brand our community, in addition, it gave the largest municipal property tax credit in state's history. Now, 10 years later, I want to be a part of a group that sits down with the leadership that was in the hospitality industry, and our state legislators, and the council to look at. There's $30 million a year that's being collected by that fee. Twenty-two million of it, by state statute, has to be used for promoting, marketing, and branding the destination. But however, can we sit down together through cooperation and communication and look at maybe there's some alternative uses of using that Tourism Development Fee? In addition, working with Ori County government and looking at the 1.5% hospitality fee, between the two of them, you're looking at 75 plus 30 million, over $100 million in tax revenue that's principally paying by tourists, that we can use to invest into our neighborhoods and our business districts and our infrastructure to serve Myrtle Beach for the next 100 years. Thank you.
Okay, John, would you consider selling the Myrtle Beach Convention?
Wait a minute. We've got a couple of questions out there.
I'm trying to answer this gentleman's first question. If you'd like, let me read this question, sir.
Well, I will talk about the last question. Is there anything we'll talk about?
We talked about the homeless statement.
Oh, yeah, that's the last question. Me, too.
Okay, so wait till the last question on the homeless. We'll get to your...
I'm a member of veterans group. We hold two stand downs a year for the homeless. We had 240 homeless at our last session, which was just a few days ago. They weren't prostitutes or drug addicts. A lot of them had a lot of mental problems. We took care of their medical needs. We gave them blankets. We gave them food. We gave them backpacks. And when it comes to housing, most of them don't want housing. We mentioned putting them in a house. They don't want to talk about it. But twice a year, we try to serve the homeless veterans, and we usually have a total of about 500 a year. And I take offense to the fact that they're prostitutes.
Thank you, sir. John?
Wayne, I applaud you for your answer. I'm just one guy doing one thing. I went down to City Hall when they had the shootings. I left there and found out that we give $50 million every year to the Chamber of Commerce, which is a private club by statute of the Supreme Court of South Carolina. Fifty million a year. We gave out the rent, he's called CEO rather than president, $450,000 a year, plus all these expenses. Now, everything they've said, everything, if you take that half a billion dollars back that they gave out over the last 11 years, half a billion will take care of infrastructure, will take care of police, you can give firemen a raise, you can give policemen a raise, you can take care of all our problems, but half a billion dollars. Now, they voted to put it, you never got to vote on it. And then you didn't get to vote on it again. Now, they have 10 more years to it, and it all goes right to the Chamber of Commerce. We don't know where it goes from there. 4.2 million went to a company in Rock Hill, South Carolina, to help us. Rock Hill helped us with our advertising promotion. Now, everybody is allowed to be circled, usually Myrtle Beach. It's all got to be out of parking. Now, in the last 10 or 12 years, do you think this beach has got to be a better beach? Do you think this is becoming a family beach? If you do, keep, keep, you see, say big, little.
Okay. Mr. Gray?
My question is, how many people would vote to revisit or to talk about the tax and maybe take it elsewhere? You just show hands if you agree to vote it, okay?
Thank you. Okay, so we are getting close to the end of the hour, so I'd like to ask the last question, or let's quickly address the Myrtle Beach Convention Center, the Sheraton Hotel. Would you consider selling that? And what do you think of their current financial situation?
Both entities, for the first time, why?
Mary, I think John, that was still his question. I'm sorry.
Oh, it's not, it's not.
I'd like to start by briefly saying thank you to this gentleman who stood up for the homeless folks in our area. I've spent about three to four hours in the past month educating myself with Kathy Jenkins, with the organization that Mary helped work on there. And to say that they're all prostitutes and dopeheads is strongly offensive, because I think one of the issues is we dehumanize these people. And we need to rehumanize them, make them, they are still a part of our community, and they are still humans. And we need to make sure that we be kind to people and treat them that way. So I want to say thank you to you, sir. Moving forward, the convention center part of it, I think that that's a business thing. We need to, if someone does come forward and sell it, we need to be open to that. And we need to make sure that it's a sound financial and business decision. Now, I'm part of your packets here. There's also something there that addresses parking that I'm sure some folks want to answer on. And my response to that would be, again, I've knocked hundreds of doors in the past three weeks. That has been my lifeblood. And not a single person that I've talked to in this city has had a negative thing to say about our current parking situation as city residents. That's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
The city doesn't need to be in competition with private enterprises. City doesn't need to own a hotel. Let's put it out on the market and put it out on international market and, you know, outside of this area, and let's see what it brings. There's other properties that likewise, we have 135 acres down on the ocean that we just signed another five-year lease. We can still put it out on the market and sell it. The sale, and I don't know what the value of it is, but we just don't need to be competing with ourselves and competing with our industry, so.
I'll agree with that last statement. They have said it and get away from being involved in unprivate business. Sell the hotel and move on. Thank you.
I'll also follow up. Roy Ryan, chairman of the board, organization called Eastern Carolina Homelessness Organization, which is part of our regional continuum of care. We receive about a million of half of federal funding from the Veterans Administration. We're providing rental assistance and wraparound services to veterans in our community. So I appreciate your comments as well. Sheraton Convention Center, yes, to answer your question, I would consider selling the Sheraton Hotel. When I was a part of council, I was a part of efforts of entertaining offers on the hotel. Wrapping it together with the convention center gets a little more challenging. I think that a convention center in our community with the types of tourists and the events that it offers is a necessary asset and component. But they also can be operated privately. So I would consider and entertain those offers. And I will tell you again, as I've said for the fourth time, 30 years of being a senior executive in financing and being a business owner provides me the experience, the knowledge to understand the financing of those large assets and projects. Thank you.
Both of those entities, both the convention center and the Sheraton Hotel, are doing better financially than they have in years. Would I consider selling the hotel? Absolutely. Have we tried to hook for buyers? Absolutely. They're not, they do not grow more trees. The hotel, I think, everybody would agree, we'll sell it as soon as we find a good buyer. Convention centers, if you travel around the country, most convention centers are run by governmental entities. They are not vet to make money. They usually do not make money. What they do is bring large groups into town, and we end up, because of the tax dollars that are generated by hundreds of thousands of visitors every year, they end up paying for themselves. So the convention center, I don't know that I would want to privatize that, because I think we've ended hurting ourselves. Responding to, I have to be careful about this, because as a member of city council, I know some things that are going on. We hope we have an opportunity soon to sell some property. And if we do, many of us want to retire the debt on the convention center hotel, which will free up a good deal of money to do some of the other things that we want to do. Thank you.
I'm going to go down to question 10, and then one more question if we have the time. Do you think we need term limits for the Myrtle Beach City Council Mayor and Councilman?
Yes, sir. I want to use the rest of my time to go back to the parking issue. John said he interviewed a lot of residents. Of course, the residents like the parking situation in town. It's free for the residents. But we're spending millions of dollars on advertising to the people who come here. And then we got a toll booth at the door. But we got to look at that situation. We've got a lot of friendly residents that aren't in the city limits, that are part of our county and part of our economy, and we're treating them just like any other tourists. I think there's plenty of land, there's plenty of opportunities to revisit this whole parking plan in town and quit just taxing the heck out of everybody coming here. You know, small businesses are choked off by zoning requirements. They have so much parking for their business. And if they don't have that, they don't get their business approved. We can do pockets of parking, all of them down the beach, that would support people coming down to the beach, would support these small businesses, and we can go on from there. Going back to the DRC when they strong-bowled everybody down at Five Points, they, for the, some of them, they didn't have the parking requirements. But when we talked about putting a library down there, and questions came out, the question answered in the design phase of that a couple of years ago, the question was, how do we accommodate the architects? How do we accommodate parking? They said, "Don't worry, we've got a garage across the street." But that's not owned by the city. It's owned by our charter. Going back to the DRC Downtown Redevelopment Plan, great ideas. Let's make opportunities for businesses. But you know, the whole plan didn't have anything about the elephant in the room. Didn't say one thing about the pavilion side. And now, word on the street, city staffers are talking behind closed doors about closing down Ocean Boulevard, okay? And it's from multiple sources. And those in the city that even peep about admitting it, talk about, no, it's in a realignment of Ocean Boulevard. Well, last time I went down there, it looks pretty straight to me. We don't need to realign it, or do we? But the question has to get out to the public, and it needs to be in an open discussion. Thank you.
Yes, sir. On term limits here, I'll agree that we need term amendments on council. We need it on the mayor. We also need it on all of the elected officials in Myrtle Beach, because they get complacent. They sit in there like they have on a big throne and do nothing for people. and do nothing for people. Just get a big paycheck and say goodbye, take care of yourself. That's all I have to say about that situation.
I didn't know it was a big paycheck. Honestly, I ask this question this way, and this is not facetious. We, we have terms, and they're called the term that you're elected to. In the city of Myrtle Beach, you're elected to a four-year term. I think when I look around at this room, one of the things that we have as our core principle is the right to choose. And we're, we're given that constitutional right to be able to choose. So, at each of the end of those terms that someone is elected to, be it the local, state, or federal level, you as an individual citizen are given that constitutional right to choose whether or not I want to keep John Doe or elect Jane Doe. And I want to keep that privilege that has been given us to us per the state and federal constitution. Thank you.
Mr. Gray is absolutely right. We do have term limits, they're called elections. And I would tell you, two years ago, we got a new mayor, and we got two new city council members. So, we have a pretty good mix on city council of people with experience, which I tell you is needed, and people with new ideas. I'll tell you this, I've been running for reelection for this term since February. I have been meeting with constituents, I have been having special events, I've been working with people extra compared to what I've done for three years. Serving on Myrtle Beach City Council for me is a privilege, it's a responsibility, and it's a duty. And I think that you can talk to people who've called me and wanted help, I've given it to them. Myrtle Beach is not Washington, D.C. I can tell you that the people on the City of Myrtle Beach City Council, all seven of us, are working together for you. You will not see us disagree with each other in a negative way, you will see us be polite and respective, respectful, you will see us debate heatedly, and when it's over, it's over. I have to tell you a story. Councilwoman Chestnut and I, in my first, uh, there was my second meeting on council this term, we fought bad about something publicly, and I think I lost the fight. And when he got up at the end of the meeting, he said to me, you know, Mary, we leave that here. And we all went to lunch together. So, you have a city council that's working for you, you have an election coming up, and I encourage all of you who can to please vote on November fifth.
Buzzword, term limits. I think that if, that's something the voters want, there's a couple ways to look at this. One, if something voters want, let's talk about it. Two, I do have to agree, I've been involved in the election process since I was eighteen. I've taken, I've taken this civic duty to my city, state, and country serious since I was in college and had the ability to do so. It's a right, it's a privilege, it's a duty, right? I would also agree that it is a right and a privilege and a duty for us as citizens to hold our elected officials responsible. And we talk about not wanting bigger government, yet we want term limits. However, we have the ability on November fifth to create term limits if we so choose as citizens of the city of Myrtle Beach, South Carolina. And if we don't choose, then we don't choose. But each of you in this room that is a city resident has that ability in four weeks from yesterday to create term limits. Thank you.
Okay, we have one more quick question, and then we'll give each candidate thirty seconds to follow up. This needs to be briefed, okay?
Ms. Jeffcoat, you said that they drive down, or just by the ground?
By the ground.
Okay, the steps are up thirty percent. The other question I have is, you said one raise taxes for recent fires. I'm in. But why don't you use the TDF that you just took from the county, or you guys were suing for, instead of a roadblock to nothing? And you can use that money because that money is actually, is earmarked by the state as public safety is part of tourism. Because we were going to use some of that money, which was with the county, to lift up the county's public safety. It's earmarked for that. So, instead of worrying about a tax over here, just say, we're going to tax it over here for fire and, and police, why wouldn't you look at the TDF to be able to do it?
Thank you, Jeff.
I probably wasn't real clear in my answer. We may have some additional funds coming in from the hospitality fee. If we do, that money first will go to public safety. The tourism development fee, as it is currently written, cannot be used in any other way than we're currently using it. Should we look at it and see if we can change state law? Here is the, um, it's a gamble to do that. Because if we go to the state government and say, we want to use some of this for operating, which is what that is, the state legislature may say, huh, you don't want that money? We'll take it, and we'll spend it on marketing for us. The state legislature in the state of South Carolina has a lot of power, and the cities have very little. Um, Mr. Gray and, and Mr. Wallace, the TDF was a brilliant thing, it's a major taxes load, and I will do nothing to jeopardize your low owner-occupied home property taxes. And that's what I think changing the TDF would do.
So, you're saying it's not public safety, is it already earmarked for part of that money? All right, then it can't be used, then we have to go back to the state?
The TDF, it, we're, it's used for, um, marketing.
No, I understand.
Rolling back property taxes, and some of it can be used for operating, and we are using some of that.
What, what, what part can be used by? Twenty percent is left, I don't think, is that what you're talking about?
I believe it's fourteen. Well, let me, if I may, just, I, I'd like to respond to Chad's question, because I think this is important. Um, and we're confusing the tourism development fee with what is called the hospitality fee. And the hospitality fee has been a one and a half percent county by charge collected by the county since nineteen ninety-seven that has paid for some wonderful roads that we have been in Fitter Farm. Twenty-two parts of thirty-one and connecting thirty-one to Briston Parkway as you come into the city limits of Myrtle Beach. What I would, and you're correct, that under state law, a portion of, of some of that, the hospitality fee is allowed to be used for public safety that's associated with the tourism concentration that you have. Here's what I would offer, that I don't believe is experience leadership on part of city council right now. I don't disagree with the conversation about looking at that forty-one million dollars a year that's collected and that one and a half percent, one and a half percent hospitality fee, and looking at maybe some alternative uses in addition to roads. But the fact that this city council has been unwilling to engage in conversation with our county elected body, the other largest political organization in this community, in fact, they were dictated by a court to go to mediation. Not one of the elected officials from the city of Myrtle Beach showed up in that mediation hearing. And my fear of that is, we may end up having a court or the general assembly dictating to our community what may be local tax policy. And that's just not what I believe to be the, the spirit leadership that should be provided in terms of cooperating and communicating with our local governmental bodies. Thanks.
Johnny, let me, let me respond to that because something that Mr. Gray said simply is not true.
Okay.
That tax that's being collected is now being collected illegally. It expired in twenty seventeen, number one. Number two, because we're involved in a lawsuit, we are not allowed to talk about what's happening publicly. We all had to sign legal documents saying that we will not discuss what is happening in mediation. He's not a part of that, he can talk about whatever he wants to talk about. We are a hundred percent committed to I-73, we are a hundred percent committed to using some of that money left over from public safety and other expenses, and it is not true that we do not want to talk to county officials and try to work that out, it is simply not true.
Okay, Ed, I'm just going to, let's move to thirty seconds to end, um, responses, and then we can ask questions beyond that if, uh, the candidates.
Hold on, hold on, oh, sir, Mr. McVeigh, Mr. Mr.?
We have changed the constitution of South Carolina, three hundred and thirty taxes. So, you go to Columbia and say, hey, we want to reallocate that taxes, we want to take that tax. You think a guy, reasonable, here's what we tax ourselves and what we do with our tax money? That's fear, that's just Chamber of Commerce fear.
Mr. McVeigh.
Passed on by Chamber of Commerce.
Mr. McVeigh.
Yes.
I agree, I want to say, first, I want to start by saying, I want to say thank you for being so involved and so concerned about what's happening here today. If you would, just out of respect for everyone's time, including the candidates up here today, if you could let Johnny moderate, and if you have a question, let her call. I'm sure everyone in this room would greatly appreciate, and thanks you, sir, but let her moderate, please.
Yeah, we need to, 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 to wait, wait, John.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. McVeigh. Okay, we have a thirty-second ending, uh, statement by each candidate, and then we can engage in any other questions that they want to engage in. And I think.
No, fewer being first. Thank you. Look, again, I want to thank Johnny, Myrtle Beach Republican Women's Club, and all of you for coming here. Having served sixteen years was an awesome opportunity, an awesome responsibility, and an awesome honor. And I look forward to that opportunity, that responsibility, and that honor again. I want to applaud my colleagues that are seeking, uh, political office. I think that that is a noble pursuit. I would encourage all of you to show up and vote on November the fifth, and I would ask you to vote for Wayne Gray on November fifth. Thank you.
Uh, first of all, just think about this. Uh, Councilwoman Jeffcoat, I think twice used the term, alternative revenue source that we're going to be talking about. I don't know what it is, but they've got something in their pocket. I don't know if it's a casino, or if it's something else, but there's something going on in this town, and we need to find out. Um, I said before, unbundled the taxes. The holy grail is their TDF, okay? Three and a half million dollars out of the thirty or twenty-eight million is what the citizen voter gets as a benefit. The rest of it goes to, the majority of it, eighty percent, goes to, to the Chamber of Commerce. Now, how long are we going to go and let, if you're a pastor and, and your neighbor is, is not a voting citizen here, how come he pays almost eight times the amount of real estate tax that you do? There's a lot of inequalities here, okay? There's a house right down the street here that gets twenty-two thousand dollars a year credit because of that tax. Twenty-two thousand dollars. Is that fair to the guy that has a small house that gets three hundred, or, or, or Mr. Wallace? We need to reevaluate all those taxes. Thank you, and I hope I get your support on November fifth.
Well, I'd like to say I, I would appreciate all the votes I can get, I'll be transparent and, uh, with the status of Myrtle Beach. Thank you.
On November fifth, those of you living in the city of Myrtle Beach get three votes. I'm asking from one of them. I think that the, uh, last four years, we've reduced crime, we've kept taxes low, we're working on the infrastructure downtown, we're bringing in a new, a new job, student technology, and we're working on, um, better transparency for governments. I would appreciate your vote, and thank you, Johnny, for responding to this.
If members of the local media would, raise your hand. Media, I want to say thank you. As I look around and look for cameras in the room, I think it's very important to, to notice who's in the room and take stock, and not only state or national elections, but where it starts on the ground. And WBF News is the only person you see with a camera, per se, in the room today. Thank these two ladies as well, to the organizations too. Again, my name is John Crutch, I'm the only John running, and I'm the most funniest last name. Two easy ways to remember it, just sort of a play on words for you. On November fifth, you have an opportunity. You have an opportunity to gauge the future of the city of Myrtle Beach. I will applaud the work that our current city council has done. And while I say that, while some of you may not agree with all the work they have done, what we can agree on is that it takes a lot of work to do what is being done. It can be a thankless effort, but they have done it. What I want to say is this, though, we have an opportunity on November fifth to take this first, second, and third year that we have hit in the city and find that new year to bring fresh, energetic, young perspective to the future of our city, to build our city for the future, not what it has been, but what it will be. That's why I ask you for one vote out of three on November fifth. Thank you.
Do you have any more, more questions?
Sure, yes.
Okay, we can, I can do about ten more minutes.
Okay, um, so we're going to open questions from the floor. Um, if you will stand, give us your name and, uh, as a person. Do you need the vice president's or a county resident's?
Can you speak up here, or?
It's a simple question. It's not a sensitive, very. I'm Kelly Davis, Ory County resident. I just have a question about our opioid addiction problem we have in the sex and human trafficking that's occurred that affects all of us in this room today.
Great question. Johnny, I'd like to answer that. Be one of the first ones anyway. When I attended my first National Labor City Meeting in March after I was elected, and I was with Councilwoman Wallace, the whole three days was on the opioid problem. Randall and I came back, and we said we wanted all of our first responders, including police officers, to have Narcan so that we can save the lives of these people suffering from addiction. The second thing we said was, not only in the city of Myrtle Beach, but our whole county has a huge opioid problem, it's one of the biggest in the state, and the state has been one of the biggest in the country. So, we, we went to all the hospitals, we went to all the governing bodies, and we went to, um, all, and they all said we're going to form a study, we're going to find out what's being done. And here's what we found out. A lot of people are doing a lot of things in Orange Georgetown County with no coordination and a lot of duplication. We're the only county, so it's the only study in the state of South Carolina that's been done. It's not only a study, but it's a strategic plan on how we move forward. It is so unique that the state of South Carolina has funded us five hundred thousand dollars to begin to implement the plan, prevention, education, treatment, law enforcement. It's all there, and now that we have the money, we'll be launching this plan within the next several months. Second, right, it's a huge problem.
I, I just agree with our Councilwoman Jeffcoat. Uh, the issue is beyond just this local government, it needs to be cooperative effort between the, the city, county, and state, and federal governments. It is a major challenge that our, that our society is facing.
I agree with Wayne. Uh, although it is a local problem, we're dealing with an issue. Uh, the, the state, federal government have to start getting tougher on the source of the problem, and that's the pharmaceuticals, and you've seen a lot of settlements going on out there. And if we just keep dishing out opiates to people, getting hooked on this, they even pull it out, the drug out from underneath, and that's how they get down the street. So, uh, yeah, we need to reach out and help these people, but let's not just make it all just a local issue because guys on the street doing a street drug. It's, it's further than that. I'm not an expert in that, but I just, one of my things is, I can't stand it that the big business that I think created this problem are not getting the, 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 uh, uh, solution to the problem. But there is some settlements coming, and who knows where that's going to go.
There are going to be a lot of echo on this question, because I think there's, I think everyone at this table would agree that this is something that we've been talking about, because we've worked on it. I think it's something that is being worked on. Uh, this is a drug problem, a drug epidemic across our nation that has affected so many demographics, whether it be black, white, rich, poor, like no other drug epidemic in the past. What's being done by the city hats off to them for putting every first part of Narcan. I've seen that happen a couple of doors down from a friend's house of mine in a very good part of town. I've met with people in different industries that have had their daughters, their sons, that were grade A students, that this affects. And something that hasn't been touched on much is the sex trafficking part of your question. That is something, we have a very large J-one population, HB-two visa program. There's a lot of turnover in our city in the summer, a lot of times where these victims are easily preyed upon. That is something where we need to continue to work with our local officials such as FBI, that we have a field office for in the city of Myrtle Beach, and other people like that, so we can continue the education process of these students that come and see America for the first time. Where, in all places they choose, Myrtle Beach, South Carolina. That's exciting to me, to make sure they feel safe while they're here, and that's what I think.
Well, since we are on the subject of prostitution, human trafficking, I'm probably the only person in this audience here that's been firsthand with industry. You can get, uh, uh, people, like some of these people talked about being an expert, if there's an expert. I classify myself as being one by being in the parks, around these people, questioning them, and all that. And we're spending all this money on these people having Narcan. Here, for instance, in Myrtle Beach, I know one prostitute that the city spent forty-five thousand dollars on. on, and she's sitting on another street corner somewhere today, doing the same thing, overdose after overdose. So there's got to be a simpler problem, and just, you've got to treat them in different categories. And you can't, there's some of you cannot help, so why spend all this money on? The way I look at it, taxpayers' money is being destroyed out of winter. Like, the new problem is, Mary, is an implement here. That's nothing but robbery from the taxpayer, attacking somebody's property. I wonder how you can get back, you got to always do...
Any other questions?
Okay. Couple of years ago, several years ago, the city pulled the plug on the shelter for domestic violence. Now we've got groups of people volunteering to raise money. You know it's going to take them 10 or 15 years? And we've got women getting beat up every day, dying every day, this is one of the worst places in America for domestic violence. I'm asking you guys, are you willing to put up or shut up, build the thing today, and we'll finance it later? Thank you.
Yes, you know, it's the crisis that we've shut out of the rock, and we've got to quit that. We share our costs with that and the public safety budgets, so cities got plenty of money to allocate for that, and it won't take a whole lot, we can get that out off the table with very little money compared to what we spend every year on marketing this town.
Tom, I hear you passionate, just one clarification, the city of Myrtle Beach did not operate a domestic violence shelter. But having said that, what we need to do is going forward is work with our private citizens, our business community, and our local political bodies in making sure that we provide that level of service and care for our citizens, no doubt about it.
Any other questions?
I really need to answer this one, because I have another answer to this one. CASA, which is Citizens Against Spouse Abuse, closed in 2011, 2012 for some very serious reasons. New Directions took that over. New Directions, which is an independent nonprofit the city helps to fund. What we found was that most of the women who were victims of abuse weren't willing to take their abuser on. Domestic violence shelters are extremely expensive to run because of the state and federal guidelines. What we also learned is the Family Justice Center, which runs out of Georgetown, gets all the money from Georgetown and Orange Counties for domestic violence. We found that a true domestic violence victim who is absolutely at risk, it's better for us to move them to Georgetown.
They can't take their kids there, Mary.
Excuse me?
Cannot take their kids.
Right now, what we are doing with domestic violence victims with children, they're going to the family shelter or doing some other things with them. Does this community need a true domestic violence shelter? It may, but the problem is county-wide. Would it be better to have that shelter in North Myrtle Beach or in Conway? It's something that we have to look at as a community and make a strategic decision about where the shelter, where it's supposed to be. It needs to be near Conway, because these women have a lot of court appearances they have to make. So we have to look at it strategically, and not just say, "Myrtle Beach, open another shelter."
I would like to say, I think this is a great opportunity for private public partnership. I think those are big in a way of moving a city forward, as I mentioned previously here today. I think that the city of Myrtle Beach has an opportunity to partner with these folks, Fred Nesta, Michael King, who are helping to lead this charge in our area. I would like to say as well, is that that group that is working to promote the funding of a domestic violence shelter on November 2nd, if you didn't know, at 11:00 AM at Myrtle Beach High School, there would be an event about domestic violence awareness, and a prayer starts 11:00 AM. So I'd invite all of you to that as well, and voice your concerns, and keep that movement going, because I do think there's a real need, not only in our city, but in our county, to have something like this for earnings. Thank you.
Another question. Probably for the rest of you, kind of so much for Jeffcoat, but there was a property that was sold in Ashford for the exact same amount that it was bought for, after five years of holding it and having a proxy get paid almost $5,000, 3.5 million, if you ask, I don't know if you know this, Jeffcoat, to get brokered that deal. I was part of a best group that offered to pay more than what they were. We were told by Mr. Pierce that they wanted nothing to do with it. So why are we selling property that the city owns for the exact same amount when there was, it was never put out on the market, it was never put on the list, or MLS? And you sold it for the exact same thing that it was sold to, because we talked to the R, they sold it to the DRC.
In the first place, we were not aware of any other offer coming for that piece of property, simply not true. In the second place...
Wait, wait, wait. What I'm saying is, is we're going to be like Mr. Pierce.
It never came to us as a solid offer to city council to buy that property. We've sold...
Did you put it on MLS? Was it put out to advertise, to sell the property?
No.
So you took it on MLS?
We've sold, the second, we had first reading to sell the second piece of property, which is the two-story former Bingo Building, to bring in a microbrewery and a makerspace. All of this is incentivizing growth. Then we have several more buildings left for sale. If you want to buy them, come make us an offer.
But that one was a loss, right?
Okay, this is one of the reasons we need to get rid of D.C. The city needs to get out of the development business, they don't even be owning this property down here. Let's put it out on MLS, let the open market decide what they can do. The city wants to offer these historic tax credits this net. The deal they did yesterday is ridiculous, the financing ability for somebody else waiting on tax credits. They're going to take down another building in this historic district, so this guy who got, is buying the city financed building, can have an alleyway. There's an alleyway 40 yards down the way to get into that parking lot. This is ridiculous, it's insider trading, it's got to stop it.
That's the wrong one. It's musical advice, man. The only thing I would say on this is, you know, if you're talking about get out of the development business, get out of the development business, get out of the development business, I want to talk about that. Anytime I travel, I try to bring back, being the only person up here who is a real estate professional, for a full-time job, is getting to be does in construction management. Everytime I travel, Fred is here for Myrtle Beach. City boss, I was very fortunate to go up there for a commission last year. City boss is currently on a path to do an innovative idea. Innovative ideas for cities, I think, are very important. Their goal is to be net neutral or net positive on energy use by 2050. One of the ways they're doing this is, they are doing, this is a great workforce of 40,000 slash partnerships, this is completely, this is a private-public partnership, where they are taking city land, holding competitions for housing in the city of Boston, where they all have to be net neutral or net positive with energy, and 20% of the housing project has to be affordable by Boston Standard. Of course, that's a lot higher than it is in Myrtle Beach, but private-public partnerships such as that can be successful for our cities. So when we talk about getting out of the development business, we have to look at, what are other cities doing that is innovative and tests the limits to make the city better? Because that is not only something that's making it better for energy and the future of the environment, it's also making it better for the private sector by creating that private-public partnership, and it's also helping folks that might not go to the floor of ownership because of their current situation. And I think that's a little bit of my thought. Thank you.
Where the march to go? Get out your tickets. And somebody look over there to the right, there's a lady left, she's got new tickets. 0119264, you won $35. Yay! Thank you. We want to thank everyone, each of the candidates, for coming. I know there are hard questions, there are volatile feelings about these issues, and we are glad you're here. We want to make sure that you encourage everyone you know to vote on November 5th, and we admire you for running for office, doing the hard work. And we couldn't do it with, you know, with our day-to-day, it is important to express our feelings and get the questions to you. We'd like to invite the winners of the election to come back and speak to us, not immediately, but sometime next year, let's have another forum and discuss these issues again. So thank you very much, and we love you.